Good evening, I'd like to call this the meeting to order. Today's Monday, November 6, 2017, it's 8:38. We're here for the purpose of the committee of the whole. Even though it's not on our agenda, I'm going to ask Patty Spencer to take role. Because we have a new person here, so we should know that.
It's not on the agenda, call to order and call the role.
I know it's not on the agenda, it should be. Do you have the ability to call role?
Call. I don't know what you're talking about, but I will call it.
Can you take attendance?
Yes.
Okay.
It's right here. Okay. Mulliner.
Here.
Brennan.
Here.
Sabatino.
Here.
Dwyer.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Slieder.
Here.
Palmsky.
Here.
Graham.
Here.
Kaludo.
Here.
York.
Here.
Levin.
Here.
Hark.
Here.
Hanquist.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Fourteen present, zero absent.
Fourteen present, we have a forum, wonderful. Announcements, any announcements? Seeing none, public comment. Clerk Spencer, do we have anybody who's signed up for public comment?
No one signed up for public comment, Mayor.
Okay, no one signed up for public comment. Is there anybody in the audience who did not have an opportunity to sign up on our sign and cheat, but wishes to address us during public comment at this time? Now is your chance. Raise your hand, seeing none. Seeing none, that concludes public comment. Onto business for the committee. Review of the fiscal year 2018 budget. Okay, that's what we're here for. Before we get started, a couple of things from the chair. Most of you have been through this. We have from now until, I think statutorily, we have now until December 31 obligated to pass a budget. We will go over, we'll get started, usually an intro by city manager of how things have gone for the year, and then you all have a review schedule that is published, and God love the city staff, it's usually pretty aggressive. Doesn't necessarily mean we're going to cover all of this. Couple of things that we do during our budget review. Certainly, you are encouraged to ask any questions at the time when staff is asking for questions on certain line items. They will answer the questions if they can on the fly, most of the times they can, but occasionally they need to get back to us, or sometimes a question is asked that a little more detail is required. Instead of taking every single meeting to go into depth in each one of those comments an alderman may have, we have what we call the circle back list. So if we get in depth on something, you will hear an alderman say, okay, let's put it on the circle back list. That does two things. One, it allows that alderman possibly offline to talk to staff to better, further illustrate the actual information they're looking for. Two, when it is identified, staff keeps a list, and at one of the last meetings before we approve the budget, staff will actually, records all of the circle back items and the requested information, and tries to summarize, which is a great way to expedite these meetings because a lot of times the answers are there for review. What else am I missing? Oh, yes. As has been my policy since I've been mayor, it is my preference that these meetings do not go past 10 o'clock. So I ask staff to be cognizant of that, and don't start, you know, the police department at 5 to 10, because it's going to do none of us any favors. Some people may even think 9:30 is a good cutoff, but we're going to go with 10 for now. And part of that is, not only is it getting a little late, but this council gets a little daffy after 10 o'clock, and I want to make sure that we are at our sharpest. So without any further ado, I am going to turn it over to the city manager and staff, and ask them to get started. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mayor, appreciate it. Before we get started, I want to make an introduction, because while I want to think that everyone has met our Assistant Finance Director, I'm not sure of that, so Lori Hayes is joining us at the table, just in case. And also, I want to say thank you to Tom and Lori and all of their staff that helped us put all this together, in addition to all the department directors, of course. So in the budgets generated since the 2015 strategic plan, we have followed the goals that were established by the council as our directive, and I believe that the budgets since then have reflected this. The achievements resulted in multiple stormwater projects being completed, an improved approach to economic development, and the review of the city's revenues. We accomplished many other goals from the strategic plan this year as well. One in particular was the zoning ordinance, which was amended. And while it doesn't seem very exciting, that re-zoning particularly impacted the city center area, and an early result of that was the transportation-oriented development model, and the award of a $10 million CMAC grant recently for the train station project. I think that shows that efforts like that can result in not necessarily direct vision goals, but positive goals nonetheless. One of the additional goals for the upcoming year is to reconvene the strategic plan group, which consisted of the city council and the department directors, to review and update that 2015 plan. The outcome should be a reaffirmation of the goals to be accomplished, and establishing any new goals for the next two to three years. I plan to schedule this meeting for the first quarter of 2018, and we'll get information on that to the council in short order. Jumping right into the budget, regarding revenues for 2018, the general fund budget does fall short of meeting our expenditures, as you've probably saw, and as such, we are recommending the use of fund balance to bridge that gap. This will bring the city budget into balance, and reduce the fund balance to within our policy of 25% to 33% of general fund expenditures. However, I must say, the trend of where the fund balance meets policy range is trending in a dramatic and unsustainable fashion. We cannot rely on the fund balance to bridge that gap in 2019 as we show it now. So when you review the two-year-out column, you'll see that the fund balance would drop beneath our policy of 25% to 33% of expenditures. I inserted the, I asked Tom to insert the graph that we typically see each year into the budget letter, which illustrates our fund balance against our policy goal of the 25% to 33%. And as you can see, we've been working to get within that goal, and we would try to use a more level type line, as Mayor and I had discussed, but as it shows now, we are projecting it to dip below that policy, which staff has concerns for.
Is this page two you're looking at?
That is page two, yes, alderman. Additionally, city revenue granted through the state of Illinois was cut this past year, and not knowing what the state might do in the next fiscal year certainly looms over us. In reviewing the capital improvement plan, you'll read that many of the projects needing, that there are many projects needing to be completed, and more than we have the funding for. But to accomplish this, we are proposing bond proceeds and IEPA loans. However, prior to these projects moving forward, we would need to discuss the revenue sources for the resulting debt service payments. In this budget, we have it slated as property tax and water and sewer rate revenue to fund them. However, we need to prioritize all of these projects, and decide which ones we will move forward with, and which ones will have to wait. Proposed revenues for the city for fiscal year 2018 total $137,358,575. As indicated in the chart on page nine, the largest revenue source is sales, property, and utility taxes comprising $49,209,50, or approximately 36% of total revenues, which is down from 38% in 2017. Service charges of $30,575,600, or 22% of total revenues include $24.7 million for water and sewer service charges. What we often caution about is that a change in the economy where sales tax revenues decline would certainly significantly affect the city's revenue. Obviously, tonight, the city council took a step in trying to shore up those revenues with the BMW agreement to keep those three dealers in town, and the city staff certainly worked hard on that, and I appreciate all their work, and I appreciate the council's support of that earlier this evening as well. In the general fund, which is the major operating fund of the city, proposed budget expenditures are, and I'll use short numbers here, $65.8 million for the 2018 fiscal year, and proposed revenues are $61.8 for 2018. As I noted before, this requires use of fund balance of almost $4 million, which will reduce the general fund balance at the end of fiscal year 2018 to $14.2 million. An overview of Elmhurst general fund revenue sources illustrated in the pie chart on page 91 of your budget. Getting into the specific funds and revenues, the 2018 budget includes a slight increase of the 1% sales tax, which is estimated at $12,892,000. We used a rather conservative number of 2.5% compared to the prior fiscal year as an increase. As a reminder, that's the single greatest source of revenue in the general fund. As I said earlier, though, the reliance on sales tax is a reality that must be recognized as a significant factor in reviewing the general funds and expenditures, and in planning for the future. Relying on sales tax also challenges city council's general fund balance goals in times when the economy starts to struggle. In addition to the 1% municipal tax, the city levies a 1% home rule tax, which funds stormwater and other capital projects, as well as some general fund operations. It's projected that the 2018 revenues will total $7,224,000 before any rebates are given. And beginning in August of 2017, the council may recall that the city, excuse me, the state of Illinois imposed a 2% permanent administrative fee to our 1% home rule tax. This reduced our amount received by $144,000 in 2018. Excuse me. Moving on to the prepared food and beverage tax, we estimate that to remain stable, with a proposed budget of $1,363,000. Regarding property taxes, the 2017 levy, which is collected in the summer of 2018, is budgeted at no increase in the general fund portion of the tax levy, and continued abatement of the debt service portion of the tax levy in its entirety, which is consistent with what the city council's plan is, to reduce reliance on property tax to pay debt service. Increases our plan for the fire pension of 5.6%, and the police pension, 5.9% levies, which is based on the recommended contribution amounts from the actuarial studies that were reported in January of 2017. Regarding state income tax, our policy provides that the capital improvement fund receives 80% of the city share of state income tax, and the general fund receives the remaining And it should be noted that continuation of this revenue source is subject to actions by the general assembly. Again, based on legislation that was enacted in 2017, our revenues decreased by 10% for one year. Because we're on accruals versus a cash basis, we actually lost that 10%. There were some reports out there that we were to remain neutral on that, however, we did not. As I said, the 2018 state income tax revenue reflects a decrease of 2% over 2016, and it's anticipated that because the decrease is a one-year decrease, 2019 may come in 5% over 2018. There may be a balance in there, but again, it's all subject to state of Illinois general assembly action. On the local motor fuel tax, which is designated for stormwater system improvements, that reflects a small increase compared to 2017, up to $334,000. On utility taxes, which is electricity, telephone, electricity, natural gas, we allocate 75% to the general fund, and 25% to the capital improvement fund. Telecommunications tax revenue continues to struggle due to expanded use of internet for telephone services, reduction of landlines to homes, and 2017 estimates are 4% less than the 2016 actual amounts. However, we are looking at a possible 1% increase over the 2017 amount, based on what we've received this year. The electric tax, which is another utility fund that we charge, is expecting a 1% increase in revenue, and gas use also anticipates a nominal increase for the fiscal year. Regarding rubbish collection, we had a five-year contract approval in 2013 with Allied. We are in the last year of that, so the revenue reflects what the charges are compared to the contract. I know that the public works committee is working on the next contract for that. Regarding licenses and permits, our permit schedule is designed to charge a fee for services used, and to return significant percentage of that revenue back to the city for expenditures needed to operate community development, as well as portions of public works and the fire departments relative to plan review and inspection services. Most of our permit fees are updated annually based on CPI. The permit fee budget for 2018 is projected at $1.8 million, and while it's anticipated that overall building of new homes may drop, we anticipate a number of commercial projects that will take that place, and so we are looking at a slight increase for that. I want to note for the council that we're currently studying our permit process and permit fees as it compares to other municipalities, and once we get the results of this, we'll take those recommendations to the appropriate committee for further discussion. Moving on to water and sewer rate increases, the fiscal year 2018 and 2019 budgets anticipate a 2% rate increase from DuPage Water Commission. Sewerage rates will be impacted by significant infrastructure replacement, which we've talked about in the past, and upgrades in the collection system at the wastewater treatment plant. These are all due to the age of the infrastructure, EPA mandates, and flood mitigation. Moving on to the parking system, we are not proposing any fee increases for parking at this time, so revenues will remain about the same. Regarding motor fuel tax, this is based on state statute and population, and the city share of MFT is projected to be $1.1 million in 2018, which is up from 2017. We get those estimates from IML, plug them into our budget, and I think in general, they've been pretty accurate. Moving on to the tax increment financing districts, just so everybody knows, the property tax revenue collected for the express purpose of financing public side responsibilities in all of the TIF districts is what this is used for. In the TIF 1, which is the downtown TIF district, we're estimating a 4.4 increase compared to 2017, and possibly an even greater increase in 2019 due to the projected increase in the EAV, which is results from all the projects that we've completed in the downtown area. They're not online yet, but we anticipate by 20, second part of 2018, and certainly into 2019, those will move on. 2018 budget includes general improvements for signage landscaping, streetscaping, and anticipates a transfer to the parking fund for the 2018 debt service payments for the Addison Avenue parking deck. The 2019 budget also anticipates the same transfer to fund the debt service. I'm not going to talk about TIF 2, because that is closed now. TIF 3, which is the Route 83 in St. Charles development, projected for this area is a slight increase due to the EAV, as I said, in the, within the others, and I'll get into expenditures in the budget as we move into that one. TIF 4, which is the North York redevelopment area, is projected to increase significantly in 2018 and 2019, reflecting the completion of several redevelopment projects. And TIF 5, which is the Church Road-Lake Street redevelopment, it's expected to see the redevelopment of the BMW dealer, as we talked about, and we don't see significant increases in the revenue there until some of the projects there move forward. Overall, we're looking at the EAV in Elmhurst to increase 8.6%, I'm sorry, it's increased 8.6% for the 2016 levy, and projected increase 6.7% for the 2017 levy collected in 2018. Those increases have been somewhat expected due to the economy and the timing of property assessments, along with all the redevelopment in town. Looking at the real estate market, it appears that home prices continue to climb, and certainly turnover in a timely fashion. The fiscal plan before you continues to follow the results of the 2015 strategic plan, and emphasizes stormwater relief through a number of projects and policies, again, economic development to continue our growth, and also to sustain our strong financial position. We all feel this is a sound fiscal plan for the city for the next year, and we would request council's positive consideration. Again, I'd like to thank the finance department staff, especially Tom, Torzine, Lori Hayes, Ryan Bruins, Yolanda Morrell, along with all the department directors for their input and cooperation during the process. What we'd like to do now, Mayor, is move into some of the departments which are listed in the review schedule. As you say, we do have a number of them on there, hoping to get through as many as possible. There are some for aldermen, just so they know, there are some that we do schedule, and we will start on specific days, like the library or public works, so that we can try to get through all of that in one swoop. But other than that, we are flexible on what to talk about and when to talk about it.
Okay, I assume you want to go in order, at least to start with, but there's one thing I do want to highlight what the city manager said, and I think it's important for folks to understand. There was a bigger picture of this one, page, was that on 90? What was the bigger picture of this one? Like 91, maybe, something like that?
It's 89.
89, okay. So I want, I just want to, really for council and public to note, here's our, this blue stripe here is our policy. We're supposed to have that in our general fund. And it's a little bit of a crystal ball act to try to get, so you can see what our target is, and if you look at the black line, you see how we get close, but you know, we're kind of up and down a little bit. But what I want to point out to council, and anybody who watches this, is we asked elected officials at the time about, going on seven years ago, six, seven years ago? Six years ago, longer than that, eight years ago. We asked the residents of Elmhurst to start making a bigger contribution to this fund way back when, and this was the result. The good news is, it went over. The issue, but in a perfect world, in our perfect crystal ball, this little black line would actually bump along inside this blue line. And that's what council tries to do, and that's what staff tries to do the best we can, is to keep that black line bouncing within that blue line. Couple of things that I want to highlight the city manager mentioned. We're abating our debt service again. There was a while there back when we were having these tough times down here where we actually didn't abate. So that means that the bonds that we were floating... So that means that the bonds that we were floating, instead of the city absorbing that debt service, we actually passed that debt service along to our residents. So very fortunate that we're still in a financial position to continue to abate the debt service at least for this year. The other thing that I would mention is that, I know that, I don't want to speak for him, but I know the chairman, York, the head of our finance committee, believes that while it's great that we had, call it $20 million up here, it really wasn't within our policy. So we made an effort to spend down a little bit and get within that area. Well, the fact of the matter is, is that staff is showing us right now that we're headed to that area, and it's time to tighten our belt and try to keep that black line in that blue swath, if you will. So my point is, for the last three or four years, it's been very easy for us to pick out, I don't want to call them pet projects, but just, hey, we're spending X amount on roads, let's spend a little more on roads. Hey, we're spending X amount on marketing, let's spend a little more on marketing. And that was easy to do that when we had $20 million in the bank. But at the end of this year, at the end of this budget, we're projected to be at 14 million. That's 6 million less than we were a couple of years ago. So I just caution council that it was easy to add projects and add to this, add spending in the past. But we have made what was our target, our correction. We have brought this down into the blue, but it's going to be tougher to, if we have something we want to add, what we used to do in the olden days, we'd say, okay, you want to add something? Go find another place where you're going to cut it. And we haven't had to do that for a while. But we're in a fortunate position, we're still within our number, and I look forward to the rest of the budget. But I think this budget is, reflects a little bit of belt tightening. And also, we did reduce taxes the last three years in a row, the equivalent of half million dollars a year. This year, I know that what staff built the budget around was a flat tax levy, but with the incremental contributions for our pensions, that's built in. Okay? So, City Mayor Grabowski, all of you.
Thank you. As you said, we would like to go in order. We do have a few of the department directors here tonight to talk about us, talk about the budget, excuse me. So believe it or not, Chief Freeman has been here a year already. If you don't remember, he came in at the end of October and jumped right into the budget and sat here last year, as you reminded me, maybe a little deer in headlights, but I don't think so. So now he's a grizzled veteran and is willing to take on the budget and answer all of your questions, so I'll turn it over to him.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. We present to you after a year of reviewing the department, a fairly flat budget for the upcoming fiscal with a couple of outliers. We found many areas in the fire department that we could decrease and save some money and look at some alternative programs. And a lot of that is a function of a very good fleet where we've maintained a capital replacement program of the apparatus and vehicles. Last year, if you recall, we purchased a new pumper. The only capital item we have in this upcoming year is a replacement of a staff car, and we don't have a major apparatus replacement for several years now for the fire department. And that's thanks to not only the replacement program, but a very good maintenance and ongoing preventive maintenance program through the public works. The fleet's in good shape, the people are in good shape. This budget presents no new personnel reduction in many of the items, with two exceptions that there are J forms attached. One of them is a prediction from Ducom because of some variables that they are not yet clear on with the move from Glendale Heights back to County Farm Road in Wheaton, there will be some increases in cost of relocation of some of our equipment, not only fire department, but more specifically will come into play in the radio fire alarm network as they move into the new building. So our best projection from the executive director of Ducom, based on historical perspective, is a 7% increase. The other substantial increase in light of the decreases that we've been able to make in the fire department is part and parcel to the building construction, new buildings going on of the people who are part-time assigned to fire prevention, building, and code enforcement. That increase that you see in that line item is commensurate with the changes that we're seeing in the growth in the city and are projecting into 2018. Other than that, the items are fairly flat across the board or reduced from last year, including the item for wages for full-time personnel, notwithstanding outcomes of collective bargaining and contractual services, our commodities, our specialty team programs, our training programs, repairs and maintenance. We've held the line and been proud to decrease where we can based on internal maintenance and based on some creativity this last year in allowing to take a fresh look at some of the things going on in the fire department.
Any questions for our chief? We're on page 121, for those of you following along. Alvin Bram, you had a question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Chief. I just was wondering if you can expound upon your comments that you've already made, and it's in the J form, in regards to the rationale for the increase in the part-time wages. You made mention of the build-out of, what again? And how was that growing?
The part-time personnel are the people that work on their days off for building department, fire prevention, code enforcement. And these are increases that are a result of plan review, increased demands in those areas because of redevelopment, because of the new commercial growth that we're seeing, increased hours have been asked of them through code enforcement that were not necessarily the case in projecting numbers for fiscal '17.
Okay, thank you. The only other question I had on, well, I have one comment and one other question. One comment, and I say this tongue-in-cheek here, but it's good to see that we don't see that big number for vehicles, because anytime, as you well know, right, anytime the fire department needs to buy a vehicle, they're very expensive. So $38,000 is very modest. The only other question I had, or maybe it's more of a comment, is it seems like, I believe, and correct my memory if you would, this fiscal year, we were fully staffed, is that true? And last year, we were fully staffed partway through, is that?
As I came into the budget process last year, we were deliberating the issue of adding three additional personnel to bring us up to full staff.
Right.
That was done into a calendar year 2017. And we've remained at full staff, and as of today, and predicted hopefully into 2018, we remain at full staff.
Great. Because you know, as you look at the subtotal for salaries and wages, I mean, relatively speaking, obviously, there's going to be cost of living, et cetera, increases, but it's remained flat, and that's good to see.
Correct.
Thank you.
Alvin Levin.
Thank you. This question maybe might be answered more generally because I see it on a number of the departments. There's a significant decrease in data processing in central garage services, not just on the fire budget, but on many of them. I'm wondering if it could be sort of a...
Alvin Levin, continue, yeah, just if you're going to speak, throw out a line.
I'd like to save that for the last, but okay. 9501, 9503 on page 122.
Got it.
A lot of that decrease has to do with capital. So as an example with IT, the IT capital for the projection for 2018 and '19 is a lot lower than previous years.
Is that because we just, we completed some upgrades? And I know we did it in police.
Completed quite a few upgrades. We're at a point of when Mike Stenson will touch on this, my cap, you know, a lot of our larger capital, a lot of our software we've done, except for our main ERP system that we're still reviewing and not sure where we're going to head with that yet.
All right, and the same thing's true in the garage services that was capital?
I believe so too, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Alvin Toledo.
Thank you. Chief, could you point or explain to me where in the budget would fall both the contractual charges for superior ambulance and, secondly, if different from that, the new cost for the new rapid response vehicle?
That's on page 161 in health services for the paramedic contract.
Line item 3001 on page 161. So you'll see the increase, a partial increase in '18, and then a larger increase in '19 as it's phased in.
And correct me if I'm wrong, then, I assume based on your response that, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, that we're, if my memory serves me, the rapid response vehicle is through that contract.
Correct.
Thank you.
Alvin York.
Thank you. Chief, just to follow up on the part-time wages, are those different part-time people than our full-time people? Or is that a hire-back situation, or what is that?
It's a hire-back. It is our full-time personnel that come back under an exemption under the Fair Labor Standards Act and are paid a fixed hourly rate to come back and work in code enforcement, fire prevention, building department, various aspects of the day-to-day inspectional services. But they're full-time personnel who are in essence working part-time in different departments in the city.
Follow-up here?
Yes.
So that role doesn't lead to any increase in legacy costs or anything like that, correct?
No, sir, it's not at all connected. There's no unfunded liability, it's a result of it, no, it's completely separate.
Any questions for our chief? Well done, chief. Thanks for all your work.
We have a couple more.
Oh. I was trying to let you go early.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Well done on the first three pages, chief.
The next is brief and also represents a decrease, the radio fire alarm wireless network. The decrease is primarily due to the fact that the system is fairly self-sustaining, aged equipment, lack of age obsolescence of any equipment needing replacement, other minor maintenance, battery replacement and so forth, and the lack of a great outgrowth of needing those radios in various businesses, unless or until an occupancy may change or a new business. So as a result of that, the expense side of the radio fire alarm network is coming in for 2018 at a projected decrease from the prior year.
Questions? Bram.
Yes, thank you, chief. And I actually brought this up to Mr. Torzine right before tonight's city council meeting. It's something that I've asked, I know, last year and maybe the year before, or maybe ever since the wireless fire, radio alarms have been in place. Do you have an idea? And if you don't, I'm fine with a follow-up, but revenue versus expenditures, because when this was initiated, we talked about on how this would be cost-neutral, and I'm just wondering if we have those numbers here tonight.
Sure. Our, the revenue line item is on page 94, the general fund, and we're estimating it for 2018 of $535,000.
Better than cost-neutral.
Correct. There are additional expenses that, you know, we incur outside of that division.
Thank you.
Next, chief.
And the last item, and I will be out of your way then, is the ESDA civil defense line item that, as a reminder, comes in primarily through grant monies as a revenue stream, but the expenses are up slightly, very little in wages. This is tired battalion chief, Don Novak, who is our ESDA coordinator, and his salary is funded through a grant. Some equipment increases, and again, this is not just under the fire department, this is emergency services citywide, so it's shared by numerous departments, most notably police and fire, obviously, and the equipment is distributed accordingly as a result. So it represents a modest increase from 2017 for the ESDA budget that is in equipment and supplies more than anything else.
Any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
A, B, C, D. Mr. Stenson up next?
I'll give a quick overview, and then Mike can answer any specific questions if you've got real tough IT questions. But in 2017, the IT department processed over 3,000 requests for service, 9 million emails, and recycled 5,000 pounds of electronic waste. The big project last year was rollout of the new VoIP phone system citywide, and the upgrade will create a reduction in wireline phone costs from AT&amp;T. And we're looking at redundant lines and unused lines, and we're also doing audit on our phone system right now. Looking at the budget under 3075, and notice there's actually a huge increase in that line item for telephone, because we're still in the audit process right now. We got some credit back, but we'll get more credits back. We're just budgeting.
What line item was that?
3075.
On what page? On 115?
17. Page 117. Sorry about that.
Got it.
And so we're going through audit right now, Mike, and we have a consultant that's helping us figure that out. We've got some credit back, we should get a lot more credit back, but we budgeted right now is what our current charges are. Our expectation is that that line item should drop down to somewhere between 25 and probably $30,000, and that range somewhere about that. So we will continue to work on that, but in the meantime, we just budget at the current charges until we get it all figured out. We'll continue to reduce and consolidate our server infrastructure. We migrated from Novell file service in Windows 2012. Also work on upgrading our group-wise email, which will enhance the calendar and smartphone integration. We're working, trying to upgrade our wide-area network. We're working right now with Comcast franchise agreement and the iNet situation to try to upgrade to a total fiber solution. Right now, we have like a hybrid that's a coax, some got fiber, some doesn't, and we're trying to work with the system to get us total fiber so we have the bandwidth that we need. Once that would happen, we could start originating channel six out of City Hall, like AT&amp;T, U-verse, you can watch this live. Comcast, you cannot do that yet because we don't have the ability here at City Hall and the bandwidth to be able to do that. So as we work through that process with Comcast, we're hoping to get fiber to the city buildings and we'll be able to start initiating that and just have better service. For instance, our fire stations right now, the service at one station, but because of the low network, it's a slow, it's a slow process, and not enough bandwidth to be able to do it. So we're hoping to get that upgraded. The last thing, I mean, Alvin Levin mentioned it about how the data processing, the whole budget is divided based on the number of computers in that area. On page 365, you can see a breakdown of how we break down the data processing services. So 9501 every budget is their share of the total IT budget. And Mike and I can answer any specific questions if you have any.
Alvin Bram.
Thank you. It's good to hear that we transitioned to VoIP. I don't know if there's been any issues. I know back in the day when VoIP was first deployed, it was, I'll say it nicely, the not the best service out there. So I'm glad to hear about the cost savings. Who are we utilizing for VoIP services?
Dave Wilson, I'm not sure what his company is.
Actually, we use, Midco was our integration consultant.
Could you make sure Mr. Stenson has a microphone?
Midco was our integration consultant, and we currently use SIP trunking through AT&amp;T.
Okay, so that was my question, that's where I was going with that question, is the reduced cost of AT&amp;T but still having a cost with AT&amp;T because we're utilizing them for VoIP? Or why is the AT&amp;T cost not eventually going down to zero?
That's correct. From the previous telephone system, we had analog Centrex and ISDM, which was a per-line cost aggregating technologies to a VoIP solution. We're able to reduce that cost and reduce our wireline solution to SIP trunking.
Okay. Just one other question in regards to the comments of servers. It sounds like we have, I don't know how many, but local servers. Has there been any discussion for having remote servers using Amazon, or if there's a governmental enterprise solution out there, I don't know, but instead of having the maintenance and redundancy here, using some remote servers?
We do currently use some cloud service. We do currently use some cloud services. We did do a study when we designed our data redundancy server at City Garage. So we looked at cost versus having in-house. So we started the process of converting our Novell OES to Windows Active Directory and 2012 servers. We were able to reduce some servers at certain locations and aggregate services on the one server from two, but we continue to look at cloud services. For instance, we used to house our website internally, and we moved out to a cloud solution with Civic Plus. So we were able to reduce our costs on the hardware side, but we continue to look at those technologies.
Great. I appreciate that. It continues to be looked at, and work has already been done in that area. Thank you.
Any other questions? Alderman Brennan.
Line item 1002 on page 117. Just curious, it looks like this past year we budgeted $52,000 for part-time, and we're estimated to be well below that. Looks like prior years is well below that as well. So I'm just curious, how is part-time IT help leveraged?
The big issue with that is we've had difficulties finding a part, part-time, filling the part-time position. We have an open position right now. We want to fill it. We're sort of looking at the NIU study right now. We were hoping to get the results back by now to determine our best staffing solution. So we're just sort of like holding right now. Hopefully by the end of the year, we'll get some recommendations from the NIU study we're doing at this time.
So there are projects that aren't done because you can't find the personnel to do them, or they just take longer because they're single-threaded?
Some of, I mean, what a part-time person will be doing is probably not that project-based more than they would be like the day-to-day operations of, you know, software, computer applications, things like that, software applications.
Any other questions? Okay. Thanks, Mike.
We'll send Mr. Stenson on his way. Next, we'll move to administration and elected officials. As you look through the administration budget and specifically page 109 on the J forms, we have two, two changes to discuss. The first is public information and communication, and basically what this, what this is, is moving $60,000 from the, really the marketing to here to better separate how we're, we're defining our communications. Just a couple statistics to share with the council. The website regularly receives 45,000 monthly page views. Our city e-newsletter gets sent to over 2,000 subscribers each month. We obviously actively monitor and manage all the social media outlets that are out there. Over the past year, Code Red was utilized six times. Another one, part of that, part of those dollars include $20,000 for marketing and programming of a citizens engagement tool in 2018. So we're looking at different mobile apps that will allow citizens to report problems to the city, whether it's through photo, video, or audio. They'd be able to upload the media along with the location, pull directly from the device, and submit that report to us. That obviously provides a clear communication outlet and advances customer service for us. The city survey is under evaluation right now. That is every other year that we, we look at that. We've partnered with Elmhurst College to look at that. I think we discussed this last time, that our response rate is decreasing, and so we think that is directly related to the size of the survey. And so we, we are gladly working with Elmhurst College to analyze that and recommend that new structure for us. And then lastly, the, our communications manager, Cassandra Schreff, recently attended a class on public service announcements and videos, and she'll be utilizing that more so in 2018 to get out to the public. That certainly is the trend right now. We've used it internally on a couple of things, just to see how it works, and so far, so good. And then the other item is the communications intern that we had this past year. That grew out of some additional dollars that the council suggested or put forth for us on the trolley program to enhance that program. And one way that we were able to enhance the trolley program was to hire an intern who rode along on the trolley to gather feedback, to make recommendations to us, and also to take care of the day-to-day stuff that, that the trolley needed on the weekends. So those are the two changes to the admin budget, turning the page to 110. Elected officials, we are not making any recommendations for new personnel, nor are we reducing the personnel for the elected officials either.
And way to hold the wages too.
That is set by statute. I can't do anything about that, Alderman.
That's set by statute ordinance, you mean. Yeah.
All kidding aside, we're happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Any questions on admin or elected officials?
I've got a question about the item before it, talking about the communications intern. I don't know if this is the right time to ask. I don't see it on here, but.
What line number? Are you speaking to a line number?
I'm talking about on page 109, talking about the city manager, Gorbowski, mentioned communications, marketing. I'm looking at additional fees, but what I'm curious about is how revenues tie into this. So I'm actually looking at page 95. If you look at the Explorer Elmhurst 45-00, I'm thinking that $4,000 is from ads, but then I don't see estimated for 2017.
I think we're going to have to put that in the circle back list if that's okay, Alderman.
Thanks.
Alderman Toledo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Also, the same line item on page 109 or the, what is it? J form?
J form.
Are we actually paying a intern $75,000? That's what the total budget is for 2018?
No, we are not.
Could you please explain that?
There are some other expenses in there. We are not paying the intern that much. I'm sorry, Tom.
Tom, you look a little red, so I think you have an explanation.
I believe there's actually four part-time staff that's in that $75,000. So that, the increase was due to the additional intern. So we, there's two interns and then there's two other part-time staff, I believe. So a total of four.
So am I to assume then that we require four part-time people to run the trolley?
No, it's additional functions that are recorded in there. So I believe like our mail clerk staff person is a part-time person that's allocated to the admin budget.
Okay. So it's more than just.
Correct. Correct.
Thank you.
Alderman Bram.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on that, and I'd just like to make a simple request to add on page 107, 10 dot, 10 dot, 10 dash 02, the part-time, for a circle back so we can discuss that a little bit further in detail.
Okay. So you're looking for a more detailed description, Alderman Bram, about the four folks, what they do, what their.
Correct, but specifically about the one that pertains to the communications tied to the trolley.
Okay. Clear enough, staff?
I believe so.
Okay. Other here with no raise. Right. Any other questions? City manager?
Thank you. Moving on to the Border Fire and Police Commission, this is a budget that takes care of the, the commission and their expenses, which have to do with testing for police and fire hiring, also testing for promotions in both of those departments as well. You see that the budget is relatively flat in there as, but it's down from 2017, but just up from the, the estimated expense at the, at the end of the year. That is primarily administered by the Human Resource Department. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Alderman Bram.
I guess it's just more on page, obviously, 111. The overall total expenditure amount on how it seems to have almost doubled from 2016 to projected in 2018. I have noted that it seems to me the line item is the professional services from 2016 has significantly increased through 2017 and 2018. Even though it has an increase from the previous year being 2017, could you please expound upon why we continue to have a larger amount compared to previous years, significantly larger?
That is a line item that's very cyclical, depending on how our hiring is. The, the largest expenditure out of there is polygraph testing, and so if we're going through a lot of candidates, and it, and it, you can't necessarily tie it to the number of vacancies we have either. We could have one vacancy but go through 10 candidates that, that just don't make the cut. So it depends all on our hiring.
Thank you.
Any other questions? City manager?
Thank you. Next is page 112, and I will turn it over to Tom for Finance Department.
Thank you, city manager, Gorbowski. Finance budget is fairly status quo. I think I'll follow his lead on, if you turn to page 114, you'll see three of our adjustments that meet the justification form. Audit, banking expenses, and minor equipment. I think the council's fully aware, we did have two long-term employees retire with over 50 years of experience. We used to do a lot of the audit work in-house, so we actually prepared the entire audit, including the notes and stuff. One of, just a few communities that would do that with the staff retirements this past year, and we're looking at the next couple of years that we will need to use our auditors for a little bit more assistance in the preparation of the audit. Banking expenses continue to increase, mostly due to the higher usage of credit cards. And then we do have, we're proposing to replace some of the equipment that we use for our utility billing, that we prepare in-house, that's old and needs to be repaired. We, we are looking at outsourcing that also, so if that happens, we would obviously not need the equipment. But those are the major changes in the Finance Department. Welcome, any questions?
Alderman York. Thank you, honor. So I failed to ask Tom this question, but if the billing is utility billing, why isn't that expense in the municipal utility fund?
We, we use the machine for quite a few different things, you know, even with the postage and stuff. So inserting just general forms and everything else, and paychecks, things like that. So it's more than just utility billing.
Does it get split between departments?
I believe it is split.
Other questions? Alderman Bram.
On page 113, 60-11, conferences and training. It seems like Finance Department has had a goal of doing some type of training but never reached that goal. Since last year, it was budgeted for over 10,000 and barely got over 20, or got to 2,600. So are you trying to go to the same training that you just have never had the opportunity to get to, or is this new training?
That, that's an accurate statement. Yes, we, we are trying to do it. We, we actually, for the national conference, we budget, we budget for some training for our ERP system, and we just haven't been able to, to attend those trainings just because of the staffing. Their goal is to, to attend.
Any other questions? Okay.
Next, for Human Resources, I'm going to turn it back to Assistant Manager, Cop.
Page 115, HR continues to support the city by developing, managing employee resources, staffing recruitment, performance management. Their liaison to the Board of Police and Fire Commissioners, the Wellness Committee, Insurance Committee, Safety Committees, and Labor Management Groups. Line item 3052, professional services includes $58,000. That's for training, organizational employment development, safety, customer service, and technical training. You'll notice that that dropped significantly from last year, and that's just because some of the items in that line item are cyclical. For instance, some of the things we did in 2017 were the compensation study, the promotional process for fire lieutenant, the performance management system with Sickish as our consultant, and some of the BPRs. And so those things won't be being done this year going forward. That's for the reduction in 3052. And any other questions?
Any questions? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Alderman Brennan.
So, geez, I don't have my glasses on. This is a bad exercise. 3052 on 115. So professional services went down from last year and then projected to go back up. Was there a project that was done and that's no longer anticipated this year?
Correct. So for instance, like the promotional exam, that's done every other year. So next year in that line, there's a $43,000 line and a budget in there for promotional exam for battalion chief and lieutenant, and.
Sorry, I may have said the wrong line item. 3052, professional services?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
So we hire out to do the promotional exam. We have a consultant that helps us do those examinations. So they're not done every year. They're done every other year, every three years. So the process gets.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay.
Next, on page 120, planning zoning economic development. As the city manager mentioned earlier, the big thing that the Zoning and Planning Commission worked on for the last couple of years, actually, and finally it was resolved this year, was these very, the zoning changes for the downtown, which we think have been a great change, especially with the look at transportation-oriented development. ZMP Commission is just beginning the process with the plan, plan development. We just hired a consultant, and we're scheduling our first meetings for that. Also working on the sub-area plans. We should hopefully, that's spent in the Zoning and Planning Commission recently, and hopefully the findings will be out in the very near future, looking at the five sub-area plans. Lake Street, North 83, York and Valette, the Donut Hole, and Butterfield Road area. And part, you know, also part of this budget, it's, it's only one line item in it, but it's the economic development, and that's the, the public programming 6045. And there was a lot of work done on economic development this year with the revamping of the street plan for economic development, outlining the goals for the next three to five years. In 2018, we're going to be working on the development of a business park plan focusing on workforce accessibility and beautification. Tiff 5 was established along Lake Street. We sought and received a grant to install the sidewalks along Industrial Drive. We did the redevelopment of the repaving up there, which was a great benefit, and we've heard many good things. If you, if anybody just drives up there, you'll feel it's a whole different feel up there now. And you'll see, especially at lunchtime, we'll see people walking on those sidewalks all the time. So to be able to get that grant really worked out well. Collaboration with the Elmhurst Park District to work on a feasibility and market study of indoor recreational facility, continue to work on that. And we just, the Park District, just a Division 2020, and one of the things that came out of that was people are interested in having indoor sports facility. DPZ met on it just recently, and we're going to continue to work with the Park District and hopefully keep that moving forward. We've embraced the preference for walkability, entertainment options, and destination-driven venues, from the new escape room, the room upstairs, a fine dining establishment such as Victory Meat and Seafood just opened recently. Liveyage just opened recently. And diligently assisting new businesses and owners in all sectors of our site selections, zoning process, liquor license, and marketing. And just some of the great investment made with expansion, like Brew Point Coffee, for instance, went from one location and out to three. They also, they took over the Lexicon Cafe and Elmhurst Library, and the new state-of-the-art Farm, the Cup Coffee and Roasting Facility, which should be opening soon, the next month or so. And just some of the overall, overall investment. Recently, co-star lists Elmhurst's commercial vacancy rate. That's the office, industrial, and traditional retail at about 3.6%, which is extremely low vacancy, as you can see as you walk around different business districts. City Center last 18 months absorbed 70,000 square foot of retail space that was vacant. That includes 18,000 square foot of reabsorption of spaces that came open and were filled over that time for. over that timeframe. If you went down Spring Road recently, you'll find there's no, not a single first floor space open on Spring Road right now, it's full. York and Valette reduced our vacancies by 10,000 square feet. Our business parks, we talked about very low vacancy, they continue to be successful. Some of the new developments up there, the MLE Merchandising and Sign Facility, that's being built in at, that was a vacant parking lot at LaMonte and Grand. Euroview Glass was a success story, that was a company that's in Elmhurst, that basically if you buy a shower door from Home Depot, it's coming from Euroview. They outgrew their facility, and were able to find another bigger facility in Elmhurst and, and moved over and continue to be successful. Two of the, two events that we saw were very successful, and many of you attended, was the Women in Management and the Commercial Real Estate Professional Forum. Also, our economic development, the, we sort of call it the Erin Jason Show, where she goes and does her PowerPoint, has been on Elmhurst now twice this year, and, and there's a new one that's out now, that you can see right now. And November 13th, addition of Crane Chicago Business Economic Redevelopment Roundtable, Erin and Elmhurst will be highlighted in that, in that edition. Going forward in 2018, economic development team is looking to bring additional networking opportunities to our business and commercial estate community, share more stories of economic success through our blog. And anybody that's not signed up for that, go to elmhurst.org/econdevblog and sign up. Some great information that comes out regularly. And in 2018, hoping to just expand the community-linked profile with branding page and sponsored content. And any specific questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Development questions? Alderman Bram?
Yeah, I was just wondering if this is the department that code enforcement falls under? Is that...
That's building.
That's building?
That's next.
All right, then no questions.
No questions, just a compliment. I know that we beefed this up. It's one of the things that we cut early on when I was first elected, about 10 or 11 years ago. And at the time, I didn't honestly understand how detrimental that could be. I believe that, and City Manager talked about it a little bit in terms of expanding our tax base. This is key, and I continue to get, in fact, just the other day, I got to get compliments about city staff and how pro-business and willing to help there, so I think you guys are doing a great job. I appreciate it.
Next is the Building Department, on page 127. Expect to get a question on this one. Through October 2017, we've issued over 4,000 permits with a total construction value of about $132.4 million. Our building inspectors performed over 7,900 construction-related inspections, code enforcement addressed over 770 code violations, and had 31 actions taken through inspections, follow-up inspections, and adjudication. Through October 2017, we have issued 82 new home permits and have an additional 15 new home plans currently in the plan review process. City continues to address stormwater issues with the check valve policy that Public Works and Building put in a couple of years ago. This year, there were 15 people that took advantage of that, for a total of 206 since its inception, and six new overhead sewer programs were instituted with 164 since inception. That's 370 homes that now have protection that they didn't have before. As you saw, a lot of, a lot of development going on in Elmhurst in, in the last, 2017, some of the completed, the Artist Senior Living, you know, Victory Meet and Seafood, Wilkins Honda Mazda, Beerheads, Brew Point Coffee, Edward Elmhurst Vision Center on North York. And we see a lot more coming up in 2018, you'll see FFC under construction, Opus Apartments, the NMLA Office, where I talked about earlier, the BMW Project, iMotorsports, which is under construction right now. And the York Building at the 134 North York, we'll just see the completion of that in 2018. Questions?
Alderman Bram, you had a question?
You read my mind. Yeah, in regards to code enforcement, I was just trying to understand, and I was flipping back and forth between page 127, you know, line item 1001, 1002, consultant fees 312 and 3092, to page 42, that talks about essentially the org chart and the number of staff. If you can expound upon, I know we lost a long, longtime part-time code enforcement officer. If you could kind of expound upon where we are with code enforcement staffing, you know, are we still looking, or are we at the point where we think we're sufficiently staffed for code enforcement? I'll be at full-time or part-time, because I have noticed that there's a, I don't, I don't want to call it significant, but it definitely an increase in full-time, as well as an increase, relatively significant increase in the part-time numbers from the previous fiscal year.
Now, the part-time, what happened, we did have a long-term 30-hour employee that left to get a 40-hour position in another municipality. And so we were able to hire two 19-hour employees for pretty much the same amount of money for that 30, with a little bit more on the salary side, but the 30 employee had some legacy costs to it with our MRF, the 19-hour employees don't have that. So it was, was close to a wash, as far as the total cost to the city to have the one employee to go to two employees and get basically 10 more hours of, of code enforcement. Also, the increase in that is there was, there was one that, you know, Chief Freeman talked about, the firefighters that worked back on their days off on these 7G FLSA agreements. Well, one that was a full-time firefighter retired, and he continues to work in, in the Fire, the Fire Bureau, but his responsibilities are almost 100% towards the building, where he's doing the plan review for us, he's doing the inspections that have to do with building construction on the fire side of like the sprinkler, the fire alarm, final occupancy times, things of that nature. So that was relocated, this line item, to more, to more address what his real responsibilities, responsibilities were, and his, actually, his office is in the Community Development Department, you know, so he more works in that area than, than not, so that was relocated to that amount, to that line item.
Were there any increases in employees, or is it just cost of living from a full-time perspective?
Yes, there's no, there's no increases in, in personnel, other than the one part-time person that we gained by the one leaving.
And I, I might know the answer to these two, 312 consultant fees, $50,000. What role is that allocated to, as well as the contract staffing? 3092?
312 is almost, it's almost all our plumbing inspector. We contract out for a plumbing inspector. It's also like elevator, we contract out for elevator inspections, that's also in that item right there, but the large majority is our plumbing inspector. And then contract staffing, those are dollars that are put in there, and we use them when we, when we need them to assist. For instance, if our, our building inspector was off for a while, we, we hired a contract inspector to come and help us with that. We've used that position when our plan review process got delayed, we bring in a contract staffer to help us accomplish that. It just helps fill in the gaps when we get really busy, they keep, you know, inspections rolling, there are, there's a couple, there's a contractor, a contract inspector in town that is very flexible to our, to our needs and is able to help us out.
So in summary, we're, we're satisfied with the staffing for code enforcement, all the way around, part-time and full-time?
At this time, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. 10 minutes to go, City Manager.
Thank you. Hopefully we can get through just a few more of these. The page 156 is the legal budget. That is a best estimate that we can make, depending on what we have going on, on the Labor Council, or on the legal fees and additional council side, that's, that's probably the main fluctuation. It depends on what bargaining contracts might be up, so there's a lot of factors that, that come into that. Redevelopment agreements that we've done, that we can't necessarily forecast, play into fluctuations. If you ask our city attorney, I think he'd tell you that Elmhurst has more going on than probably all his other clients combined. I think we've been represented well by our city attorney and his firm, and I would recommend continuing that.
Any questions on legal? Alderman Bram?
The only question on this, and I, I might, may have requested it last year, was, I, I know this is the, I guess, primary spot to look for legal fees, but I believe throughout the budget, there's various account numbers, if you will, or chart of accounts, that also have legal dollars allocated. Is there a way that, you know, by the, before the end of these discussions, that we can have an overall view of what the legal fees are throughout the department?
Absolutely.
Thanks for the nod, Tom. Thank you.
Any other questions on legal? Okay.
Moving on to the claims account, you see page 158 and 159. The J Form of 159 explains the, the increased proposed budget reflects an estimate of anticipated fees based on recent claims experience, mostly for auto liability, so slight increase there.
Questions? Okay, let's move on.
Page 160, the senior services, that is all of the programs that we have regarding taxis assistance, the senior assistance program with... The senior assistance program. Name of the company. Metropolitan Family Services, thank you, Tom. Boy, I was drawing a blank on that, which is housed here at City Hall and has been for some time. And then we also have the youth commission expenses in here. You see the youth commission has been very active the last couple of years. You've seen some, some great media pieces that have followed what they've done. They've brought in some big names to talk about issues that are prevalent in, in the community and would fully support them in, in what they would like to do coming up in 2018. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
What's going on with the taxi subsidy? With the budget versus the estimate and...
6049?
Sorry, I'm not even following my own rule. 6049 on page 160.
So it seems like every other year, we start talking about the possibility of switching to a different taxi program, like Ride Do Page or something like that. And so we anticipated that doing that in 2017, weren't able to accomplish that, so we've, we've carried over part of that in anticipation of having that conversation this year, to see if it's worth our while to do that.
Tom, I don't know if you can answer this off the top of your head. What do we, for our senior taxi subsidy, right now, is anywhere in town, one-way trip is a dollar 44 or something?
Dollar 40, unless you're proposing an increase to 44.
Dollar 40, I'm not proposing an increase on the seniors. A dollar 40, one-way trip.
Elmhurst Stonely.
Elmhurst Stonely, okay. All right, any other questions? Alderman Bram?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to follow up on your comment in regards to Ride Do Page. So, City Manager, do we have the intention of reopening, I guess, the discussion of Ride Do Page in 2018? And if so, I mean, is it an alive and well program? I haven't heard much about it in the last few years, so are many communities participating?
My understanding is that it is alive. I don't know how well, I haven't looked into it enough to, to tell you that. There are other communities that participate in it. It's something that, as I said, has been ongoing discussion. I know when, when I got here, there was talk of either Ride Do Page, or possibly buying our own bus, and all kinds of options that were thrown out on the table. So we, we will continue to look at it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on senior services? Health services?
That's page 161. That is the ambulance service and mosquito abatement, which I, I think are pretty self-describing. As Alderman Toledo had asked about earlier, the J Form that's on page 162 reflects the, the addition of Rescue 1 to the, to the contract with Metro Paramedic.
Okay, covered that earlier. Any other questions? Alderman Palomski?
Just tied to the ambulance service, where can we see the revenue? Ceremony and Superior comes. Where can I find that?
Give us a second to find that.
Okay, thank you.
On page 94, General Fund Revenues, the middle of the page, Charges for Services 341, under account 25-00, Fire Protection Services. Approximately $300,000 of that is for Bensonville and Yorkfield Fire Protection Districts that we provide, and we estimate about $150,000 that we would possibly recover from our Metro Paramedic Services.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Alderman Bram?
I was just going to ask, where are we? I, I don't remember anymore, what, in the ambulance contract? What year are we? We know? I don't remember.
Probably year three?
Year three.
Out of five?
Out of five, but then there were additional years added because of the Rescue 1.
Rescue vehicles.
Correct.
Any other questions on health services? I think we successfully killed this one, didn't we? This was 50,000 forever, and it was 25 minutes every year to discuss it, so we're putting it in as blank.
That's correct.
I think that satisfies most people. Any questions on, you want to add 50,000 back in, Alderman Bram?
I'm just kidding.
Okay. Covered. All right, City Manager, we've got two and a half minutes. What do you think about the cable TV?
I, I think we can squeeze in cable TV.
All right.
Two and a half minutes. So that covers professional services for coverage of meetings such as this, along with the, the show that Mike talked about earlier, as far as staffing of that goes, as well as a number of community events that the, the staff, the cable television staff, which is contracted, is out and about.
Looks pretty flat. Any questions? No, no, we are at 9:59. I think, City Manager, are we satisfied with getting through Q? So as staff will do, they will revise this schedule, showing what we have covered, what we haven't, revise it a little bit for our next meeting, and we'll take a crack at it.
Yes, thank you.
Is that it? Entertaining motion to adjourn, motion by Alderman Mulliner, second by Alderman Park. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. We're adjourned, thank you.